Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call this informational meeting of November 10th, 2020, to order. Before we get started, just for the record, let's find out who we have on the phone. Anybody on the phone? Could you please identify yourself?
I'll remember Janet.
I think I heard Selberg and Brecky.
And Kylie.
Kylie and Erickson, I think, too. Did I miss anybody? Doesn't sound like it. Thank you all for your attendance. We have a few people here in the room as well. The first item on the agenda is committee and commission reports. The first one is the Sioux Land Heritage Museum Board. I don't know that I heard Counselor Starr on the line, so unless he's on the line, we could just defer that for a week. Not hearing him right now. Urbanized Development Commission, UDC, would anybody have a UDC report? Not hearing anybody jumping up and down on that one either. Maybe we'll just punt that for next week, and we'll make sure that we have that ready to go. So I don't have my notes in front of me, otherwise I'd take a shot at it. So with that, next up is counselor remarks. Anybody who would like to make any counselor remarks, previously known as open discussion? Anybody on the line? Hearing none. We're going to move on to presentations. It is a Parks and Recreation Day. We have three presentations from Parks and Rec. The first is Item A, the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum Management Agreement. That's presented by Jackie Nelson, Parks and Recreation Administrative Manager. Welcome, Jackie.
Good afternoon. So Jackie Nelson, Parks and Recreation Administrative Manager, here to talk to you today about the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum and East Exorcise Management Agreement. So this is a management agreement that is expiring at the end of the year, so that's why I'm here to talk to you about it today. So the current agreement, as I just mentioned, expires on December 31st. There is not an extension option in this agreement. If you remember, last year, we also brought this to you in December for a one-year agreement. Last year, they were going through their master plan updates, so we thought it'd be good just to do a one-year versus a three- or five-year, just to see how the master plan came out. This year, similar situation with this new agreement. We're looking at, again, just a one-year agreement, because throughout the past of, or throughout the course of this past summer, they actually had some leadership transitions. So they currently have an interim director, and that would be Mike Cooper. He should be joining me here today, hopefully, if he's able to make it, to answer any questions. But with the snow, I'm not sure if he'll be here or not. But Mike is the interim director. And with that, and knowing they still have the master plan out there, we are going to recommend to you on the 8th of December, when we present this, a one-year agreement, again. So that being said, because it's a one-year agreement, because there's still a little bit of change happening within the leadership, this agreement, again, is very limited in terms of the updates. And the updates that I'm going to go through next have already been approved by the Arboretum Board. So the updates are just two. So the first one is in Section 6, and that's under improvement. So really, it says anything, any type of improvement that's going to happen at the arboretum, if they're using city funds, needs to obviously go through the city, but also if they're not using city funds, those two would need to be approved through the Director of Parks and Recreation or one of his delegates. Ultimately, it's just saying, we want to know what's happening out there, be up to date, and make sure that we're okay with whatever changes or improvements might be happening. And then the second small change is under society responsibilities, and that's as it relates to their event management. So in the past, it really just said that city staff is responsible for the maintenance, but it never really clarified what the society's responsibilities are, so we clarified that to say, if they have an event, it's the society or the arboretum's responsibility to set up, take down, and manage the event. So ultimately, just adding some clarification around events and who needs to do what as relates to the agreement. So again, very small changes, knowing that this will just be a one-year agreement. That being said, October 8th, the Arboretum Board did approve the agreement. We're with you today to go just through the basics. We'll be presenting the same presentation to the Parks and Rec Board on November 19th at their park board meeting, with coming back to City Council on December 8th, and then hopefully, the new agreement being effective January 1st. And with that being said, I did see Mike just join me, so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them from the Parks and Recreation side. Otherwise, Mike would be happy to answer from the arboretum perspective.
Thank you, Jackie, and welcome back, Mr. Cooper. Back to the chambers. Nice to have you here. Any questions in person or on the phone? Counselor Sale?
Thank you. On your overview, I got to check your dates. The new agreement runs from when to when?
It'll be January 1st of 2021 through December 31st of 2021.
That's what I assumed. It looks, in my sheet, it says January 2020, so it just must be a typo.
Gotcha.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions on the phone? Not hearing any. So we have, Mike is serving as the interim, and I assume there's going to be a search. And once I get a permanent director in place, there'd be some discussions about a master pla, or, excuse me, a longer-term contract?
A longer-term agreement, correct.
At the expiration of this one, or?
Yep.
Something to that effect.
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
That is our hope.
Very good. Last call for questions. Hearing none? Thanks for the update, and thanks for coming. Next up, B, declare item surplus, Tut Hill House and Garage. The Saken House by Kelby Maris, Park Operations Manager. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. Happy to be here today to discuss with you a recommendation to declare a couple of, or three buildings surplus. First of which is the Tut Hill House. This house sits at Upper Tut Hill. It was donated to the city by Arthur and Dot Tut Hill in 1953, along with some other structures and the first 40 acres of what is now Tut Hill Park. We were actually surprised to find through our research that the Tut Hills were actually the fourth owners of this house, and it was considered their summer home. And now the city is the fifth owner of this house when we took over in 1953, when the property was donated. So the house does have some current issues, some current needs of projects, things that need to happen. I want also to make sure at this point that I inform you that these needs existed before September of 2019. So the house needs a new roof. It needs new siding, exterior doors, windows, downspouts, gutters, and HVAC system. We have contracted with Geotech to do some hazard material testing on this house, and of course, they have found asbestos. The siding is asbestos, and there's some asbestos duct wrap on the second floor of this house. So all of these projects that I've talked about to this point need to happen all at the same time. Due to EPA regulations, we cannot cut or penetrate through this siding without it being abated. So I can't do windows without getting into the siding, or roofing with the flashing, or HVAC system to bring it up to code as far as the discharges and air intakes. So really, all of these projects need to happen all at the same time. Also, the house has some limited functionality, and it is only 800 square feet on the first floor, which includes the restroom. The second floor is not accessible to users because of the way the house was renovated in 1993 for its current purposes. So to give you some ballpark estimates on what some of these repair costs would be, the items that you see here in the dollar amounts were given to us by a local contractor who was providing some information to us, really without doing a ton of research of going into what exactly everything would take to do these projects. You do see the abatement up there, and you also see some architect fees. Those architect fees were provided to us by a local architect, Miller Sellers and Hareau, that we reached out to for this process. Now, we're, these all total up to about $120,000, but this also is a perfect world situation. If we start pulling shingles off, we have no idea what we're going to find underneath. We start pulling siding off, we don't know what we're going to find underneath. So any additional repairs, I mean, there's no contingency to this whatsoever. A local structural engineer has told us that we are likely to find, when we pull the two layers of asphalt shingles off of this roof, that 25, at least 25% of the roof decking would need to be replaced also, and that's not in these numbers. So I had mentioned that all of these needs existed before September of 2019. It was an important date in our history when the tornadoes came through in September of last year. It uprooted some trees and laid them over onto this, onto the Tut Hill House, causing some additional damage. Insurance is not available for any of these repairs, because the deductible, the way the insurance works with the city is that it's a per-event deductible across the entire city, not just per structure. And the deductible is so high that it exceeds the insured value of this house. So even if the house was completely destroyed, insurance proceeds would not be available due to the high deductible and the low value of the house. Also, you may remember, this was a FEMA-declared event, so what about FEMA funds? FEMA will help with funding to restore the house to pre-disaster conditions. As I'd mentioned, all of these projects existed prior to the disaster. I do want to provide some additional pictures of the damage that was done during the tornadoes, when the trees were finally removed from the house. You can see in this slide that we actually had tree branches that punctured through the roof and into one of the upstairs rooms. The middle picture, I think, is most telling into what I had mentioned earlier about we don't know what we're going to find once we start getting into these projects. That is a drywall tape joint where the paint was popped off after the trees fell onto the house. So they hit with enough force to pop the paint joint off of drywall located on the first floor of the house. And the third picture on the slide just shows some additional damage. So the house, the repair cost to the house rival the value of the house and its limited functionality. We do not believe that this is a good investment in taxpayer dollars, and that any investment would be best served for other improvements. We have done a considerable amount of research, along with the city attorney's office, and have determined that there are no deed restrictions related to this house. And it is for these reasons that staff recommends a removal of not only the house, but the detached garage as well. The Tut Hill legacy is alive and well in Sioux Falls, not only at the 80 acres of Tut Hill Park, but also the house at the top of this slide, picture at the top of this slide, was Arthur and Dot's primary residence. It was moved from the location of what is now the downtown Y to 722 West 23rd Street. It is privately owned. After Dot's death, Arthur remarried and married Mildred Johnson, and they resided at 1411 South Center Avenue. And this house is in the current Hayes Historical District, and is privately owned. John Tut Hill, who was Arthur's dad, was also the gentleman that brought Tut Hill lumber to Sioux Falls. His former home is the current Bishop's House, located just south of the cathedral at 423 North Duluth Avenue. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the current DeWitt Designs building, which is the building that was Tut Hill lumber. So you will see this come to you as a resolution following park board, but also in this resolution, similar to the way it's been done for some other properties that have been declared surplus, there is another structure in one of our parks that we will add to this, that we, again, would like, we would recommend removal of. We call it the Saken House. Not exactly sure where Saken comes from. We believe that it was the last name of the people who last lived in this house, prior to the city using it for storage. We estimate that it was constructed around 1960. It has a wooden foundation, so there's no concrete block, rock, or concrete in this foundation. Was used for storage for winter Wonderland lights, but it's currently not being used. And its location, I mean, most people don't even know that this structure exists because of where it's at. It's really in between Rice Street and the Chalet, and as you come in and out of Great Bear, even in the wintertime with no foliage, really, you can't even see this house. So there's some additional pictures of what the house looks like, both front and back. The building is secured, so that there is no concerns with anybody getting into the house. We currently, as I'd mentioned, do not use it. It has been tested for hazardous materials and found none. We do have a pending demolition permit for this structure. Like I said, it wasn't, we didn't find any hazardous material, but if my trustee knows, tells me anything that there's something amiss in that house as far as mold or something else. So the timeline for both of these structures, we did have a neighborhood meeting with the Tut Hill neighborhood on October 28th. We did not discuss the Saken House at that meeting, of course. This was with the Tut Hill neighborhood. We are here with you today at the informational meeting for November 10th. Parks and Recreation Board will have a recommendation at their meeting on November 18th. And then, as I'd mentioned, resolution to city council meeting on December the 8th. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Kelby. Before I go to questions, I just want to let the public know, if anybody's here that's interested in this topic, you will have a chance to speak to it. That's at the end in our section, which is called Public Comments, so stay tuned. Questions on this? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Say, I've got a question on the Tut Hill House. The architect fees, $37,500. Now, why would we need to get architect, you know, an architect involved for the roof gutter, downspout, siding, windows, doors, HVAC, and even abatement? Why would we need that $37.5 there?
So this is a commercial building. It's a city-owned building. And when we do these types of projects, we work with architects to put the plans together, so that as we're bidding the project, we're bidding apple, we're getting apples-to-apples comparison from the contractors in the bids. And that number is so high, it's at $37.5, because the architect actually estimated the project at between $200,000 and $250,000, not the $120,000 that we got from a contractor. So if we were going to do this work, it would be that we would issue, or we would go into contract with an architect, have them put together the plans and spec sheets and bid documents, and then we would bid from those documents.
Sure. Maybe just a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Please.
So I understand the concept that you just outlined to me, but to do, like I said, to do roof gutters, downspout, siding, windows, HVAC, abatement, I just don't see where there is a need for an architect in that situation. And like, what are, do we RFP that out to private firms for an architect? Or is that a city cost in a city department? Or what, you know, where does that go? Because it seems like $37,500 is absolutely ridiculous for the work that we're accomplishing here, and it, you know, almost, not quite double, but just about doubles the cost of that.
Right. No, and I completely agree. Like I said, we got the scope of work and this estimate from a proposal from a local architect. Not that we would have to use this architect, but they typically base their fees on what the construction cost that they estimate is going to be, which is significantly higher than what was on, than what was on the slide. We definitely could issue an RFP, but one of the things, especially with, I had mentioned, we don't know what we're going to find. If we were not to hire an architect, as soon as we peel something off and there's an issue, then we're trying to figure out what the best, what the best method for it is, without having a professional on our side, where it would be a decision that would, we would try to muddle through between contractors and city staff.
Okay. Counselor Sale?
Thank you. Kelby, what's the plans for this location in Tut Hill? If this house is demolished, what are the plans for that location?
So we haven't completely figured out exactly what we would do. There are a couple of ideas that have been just kind of floated. At this point, we've talked about just green space. We've talked about an area for people to put up canopies to support events that they would have in the gardens. We've discussed, maybe we extend the gardens into this area as well. There has been some conversation about maybe a shelter, but we don't know what that looks like. So those are all just kind of green light thinking conversations that we've had at this point, but don't have a solid recommendation as far as what exactly would be, we would use this space for.
I appreciate that. So if this house is demolished, what is the cost for demolition, knowing that there's asbestos there?
So we've got the abatement cost estimated at $10,000, and then the demolition would be completed by city crews. So it would be, you know, equipment and labor costs that have already been budgeted by both Public Works and Parks and Recreation. I don't know exactly what it would take as far as the amount of hours and fuel consumption, but it would be done by city crews.
Knowing that the house is in poor shape, what is, if we don't have an apples-to, okay, here's the house today, here's $120,000 or $250,000 to do it versus our long-term plan, it'd be nice to have that, if we tear it down, we're going to do this. It would be nice to have that in our hands before we make that decision about declaring it surplus to demolish it. Is there any hurry to have it demolished now?
The winter months are the best months for this type of work for city crews to take the structures down. The type of equipment that it needs, you know, the excavator and the trucks, there's, not today, but there are times within the work schedule, both between the street department and Parks and Recreation, where we can fit that into our workloads. In the summer months, it doesn't fit very well. Really not going to pull a street department crew off of paving to do something like this. So while there's no urgency necessarily, but it is, it is something that we've got the capacity to take care of in the next couple of months, and so you're seeing it here before you today.
Thank you.
Questions, comments on the phone?
This is Councilmember Brecky.
We'll go to Counselor Brecky first, and then I think it was Counselor Kylie.
Thank you. A question about the current use of it. How, what was it used for, and how much use was it getting?
So the house was used for different events, mostly weddings as a support space for the weddings. The weddings would happen in the gardens. There was some other uses for graduation parties, birthday parties, and other gatherings of different people. The most reservations that we had for, and we tied the gardens and the house together in our reservation process, because we can't have competing, you know, competing events, one in the garden and one at the house. But in 2016 was the highest of the last five years. We had 125 reservations. In both 2017 and 2018, we had 119 reservations each in those two years. We had 99 in 2019. There were a few events that were canceled following the tornadoes after September. And we've had 69 events this year, all of course, of which has happened in the gardens.
Then, just a follow-up question, then. I'm wondering why we let it fall down into such disarray? I mean, that's pretty dramatic that all of those things needed to be done at once. How come we weren't systematically maintaining it and changing out the roof and doing the siding issue like we did if we owned a regular house?
Right. So we have been having this conversation during budget discussions internally for several years. It's been one of those difficult conversations for us because of the cost and knowing, we, of course, before we had it tested by Geotech, we always had a sneaky suspicion that we were dealing with asbestos siding, and again, would have to do all of these projects at once. The HVAC system is, the water heater is relatively new. The furnace is almost 20 years old, but it's new building codes that would require, that was the reason why we put this in here, because we have to get fresh air and an exhaust out through the side of the building.
What kind of use does it get during the winter months?
It gets sporadic use during the winter months. The majority of the reservations you will find between May and the end of September. Any weekend in May and early June, if you don't already have a reservation at the Tut Hill House, you won't find one available. So it's typical heavy use is May and June.
But does it get any use in the winter, and if so, what kind of events are held in it in the winter?
It does get use in the winter months. There's been some meetings over the years that have happened. There's been some small gatherings for meals that people have brought in, or maybe a small holiday party that people use the house for. But they're, they are really pretty sporadic throughout the winter months. It's not something that we would see even weekly.
What is the cost of using it, reserving it and using it?
The reservation fee is $175, and again, that includes the gardens.
Okay. I guess I would just parallel what Councilmember Sale said. I, it's difficult for us to be asked to make this decision. You know, whenever you change something like this, then, you know, there's a loss for those, you know, that business or that, those activities that were done there. I would be more, I would be really interested in knowing what the plan is, you know, what we're going to be substituting in before I could get real excited about demolishing it, you know, at least to have some sort of a, you know, of an outline about, you know, what kind of use, you know, you're going to, you know, do up there instead of this, because for those individuals, particularly the wedding, I mean, I think that was a very unique and a very affordable venue, and it's going to be a loss, you know, in that area for that, you know, from that affordability standpoint. And it was a nice, a really nice, you know, thing to be able to offer, you know, the general public. So I would just, you know, parrot that I think it would be, I would sure like to, you know, hear, you know, more what the plan is as we go through the process. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yep. I completely agree with that. Some of the ideas that we've talked about as far as what the future holds we've had with the neighborhood, with neighbors who were within, you know, about a quarter mile of the Tut Hill House or Tut Hill Park. We sent out 574 postcards notifying people of this meeting. Had a great response. Twenty-eight people that actually showed up to the meeting on a Wednesday night in October. And I can tell you that as some of those, some of those ideas that I had mentioned actually came from the neighbors. And this is the first time that we've ever engaged with that neighborhood that anybody can remember. It's typically how we deal with these projects, is that we engage with the neighborhood first, because they're the people most impacted by any of these changes in projects. And really, what we're finding through our conversations with the neighborhood is we've got about a 50-50 split on people who want to see something new in this space. They just don't know what. And people who would not like to see anything new in this space as far as leaving the house the way it is.
Counselor Kylie, did you have a question?
Mostly comments. I have been contacted by a member of the neighborhood with their concern about the house being scheduled for demolition. I met with several of them this past Friday afternoon at the house, along with staff from the city Parks and Recreation, and it's, it is, while there is some history to the house, it's not one that is on the historical registry. The, as Kelby had mentioned, it's not tied to any of the park needs. The, what else I learned at the meeting was, when they host the weddings, it might be used as a changing room. As Kelby had said, it's only about 800 square feet inside. And that the, what got used the most was the outside deck attached. attached to, uh, this relatively small, small house. We kind of ended up with a discussion about whether or not the department would entertain, uh, private donations that could help preserve the house. And, and while they were open to lis, to listen to that possibility, there wasn't any immediate plans that were presented, uh, or determined at, at the time of the meeting. It's, we did discuss that if it were removed, it could be used as a flat space that maybe would be in, in place of the house. Some of the larger tents that could be erected and potentially accommodate more people than what an 800 square foot home, that that could possibly be used on a demand, on a demand basis. Uh, the numbers that Kelby presented in terms of, uh, the use each year were presented too. What Kelby didn't address is that there's, in addition to the repair costs, there is a, obviously upkeep costs associated with the house in terms of heating throughout the winter, air conditioning in the, in the summer. So, uh, quite frankly, I question whether the $175 fee is, is really high enough. Um, it is the only venue in the city as far as wedding gardens that would have, uh, a structure associated with it to be used in the manner that this one has been. So it is somewhat, uh, unique in that regard. So that was, uh, something else, uh, that we had, had, had discussed too. So there is, there is some support, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, I, I would begin to give you a percentage of what, uh, there is in terms of support versus people that, uh, really don't have an opinion on the manner. Um, I do know that it's been around for a long time. I mean, when I was a seasonal park worker, uh, the Parks Commissioner actually lived in the house at that particular time. But you, uh, even though, even though it's not on the, uh, register of historical places, it's, it, it does have some history, some unique history to it.
Thank you, Councilor Kylie. Others with comments or questions on the phone? Not hearing any. I guess I do have a couple of questions. First, going over to the Saken House. Is that something that potentially could be, if we were to surplus it, would that be something where we would let Habitat come in and take pieces out of it? What, what would be the disposition of the building?
Um, well, we haven't met with Habitat on the Saken House. We have on the Tuthill House. At Tuthill, really all that they were interested in were exterior doors. And so I would guess, knowing the condition of the inside of the Saken House, I mean, the, the cabinets are all gone, countertops are all gone, just to open it up for more, uh, more storage space for us. So there's really nothing inside the house. No sinks, no, no toilets, no sin, you know, any of that stuff is already gone. Uh, but we can definitely reach out to them and see if they'd be interested in the exterior doors as well. Uh, but outside of that, I can't see anything being of use for them.
It's already been effectively gutted. It's kind of a shell?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, there's not a lot of, there's not fixtures and okay.
All the fixtures have been removed.
Okay, and then this was touched on a little bit, what the Tuthill House is used for. Obviously, this would be part of, uh, neighborhood meetings of what to do in the future. But, you know, I guess what I put down is what holes would there be to fill in terms of if it went away and it's a lovely place to hold weddings, you know, what is it serving? If it's somewhere where people change or, you know, maybe they have a little bit of staging or whatever, for lack of a better term. Has there been discussion about, you know, could we put something else in place that might even be more effective and let people still be able to do their, do their weddings?
Right, we've talked about that. Um, and again, what exactly that looks like, we don't know. Uh, and again, as Councilor Kylie alluded to, uh, we've got four wedding venues across the park system and this is the only one with a support space like this. Uh, so at Sherman Park, McKennan Park, the Japanese Gardens at Terrace Park, there is no support space like this. Uh, and the number of weddings at those locations rival the number of weddings that we have at Tuthill as well. So, you know, I mean, it's not, it's, not having that space has not deterred people from using our other spaces and utilizing those formal gardens and spaces for, uh, for their weddings. Uh, so, I mean, I, again, the, the weddings happen in the gardens. The house is just a support space. Uh, it probably gets more use during a graduation party when that's where the food is for, for people. But again, uh, the activity happens outside in the gardens and on the deck. And, and it being an alcohol-free park, uh, it's, and the house being so small, it's not a location for reception. So the wedding parties show up, they take pictures, they have their wedding and then they leave someplace offsite to another event venue to have their, to have their reception.
Okay, good context. That's all I think I have, so, uh, if nothing else, we'll move on to the last item, which is item C, amendments to sponsorship agreement for the Midco Aquatic Center. And Kelby, you're also presenting that.
Yes, thank you. We currently have a sponsorship agreement, uh, for the Midco Aquatic Center with Papa John's to name the two of our meeting rooms, the Papa John's Party Rooms. Uh, they are the, the two larger meeting rooms that are in between the 50-meter pool and the recreation pool. The facility was closed, as you may remember, in March, opened up again in June to limited capacity. Uh, and currently there's still very limited concessions available. Our concessionaire does at this point support birthday parties, but they don't have regular hours just yet and we continue to work with them on that. Uh, something else that this sponsorship agreement does is it makes Papa John's Pizza, uh, the pizza of the Midco Aquatic Center. So it's the only pizza that our concessionaire can sell. So, so there is a revenue piece there for him, um, as well. Uh, they, we were expecting a payment in June of this year. Um, of course, that payment from Papa John's did not happen. And the agreement has another payment, um, expected on the 15th of December of this year for this sponsorship agreement. And due to, you know, the facility being closed and our, our attendance numbers being down, especially through the summer months, uh, we felt that it was best to engage with this sponsor and, and do what's being done in some other, some other venues across the city as far as, as trying to find ways to, to add value to these sponsorship agreements. Our proposal would be to waive the June 15th, 2020 payment and the December 15th, 2020 payment, but add a sixth year to this five-year agreement. That would make the, the dollar amount the same value through, uh, through the course of this sponsorship agreement. Uh, but, but extended an extra year, uh, knowing that there was a significant amount of time um, within this sponsorship agreement that was lost due to, you know, current conditions and the facility being closed. Um, Papa John's is agreeable to these terms as far as waiving the two payments and then adding that sixth year. Uh, this would come to you again, uh, on December 8th as a first reading to an ordinance. Uh, due to the naming of the Papa John's, um, Party Rooms, uh, does require an ordinance. And the Park Board is set to, um, to act on this item as well on their November 18th Park Board meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilor Jensen?
Thanks. Kelby, how many events were held in the Papa John's Party Room, uh, you know, during the time that they weren't paying, uh, their sponsorship?
So since the facility closed, if memory serves, we have hosted 14 birthday parties.
Do you know of, so with this sponsorship, the only provider of food can be Papa John's? Can it be outside of, like, let's say you have some other type of food, not pizza?
So our concession agreement with Stensland's Family Farms, and they are the ones that provide the food, but they, it's in their agreement that they have to, if they're providing pizza, they have to provide Papa John's Pizza. And no, no outside food or beverage is allowed to be brought into the facility. Uh, and that's written into that concession agreement.
Do we know how many pizza parties were held during the time that?
I, I was told by Papa John's that, uh, since the facility closed and then since reopened, that they've sold $140 worth of pizza.
Thank you.
Others? Questions, comments from the phone? Not hearing anything. So it, essentially this is essentially a renegotiation given the facts with COVID. I mean, that's pretty much it.
Essentially that's it. There's no, there's no vehicle within, um, within the current agreement to make any of these adjustments without amending the agreement in, in its entirety and bringing it back before this body for an ordinance.
And I, I was just, just curious, so the, the June payment wasn't made. Was that something that, I don't know if contractually that's allowed or if there, that was mutually agreed? You don't, don't send us a check? I mean, what, we're here in November and we haven't been paid? So?
So it's my understanding that, um, they of course didn't, they didn't issue us a check, but we also did not issue an invoice. Uh, so through various conversations and various departments, um, for whatever reason, the invoice wasn't sent. And we, we through discussions have decided that it's time to, to make things right and to, to make sure that we are adhering to the agreement that was signed. And that's why we're here today with, with an amendment. Again, that it, we, you know, being, valuing our, our sponsors that we have there at the Midco Aquatic Center, we, we felt that, uh, you know, due to the lack of attendance because of the current situations, that, uh, the value of their sponsorship would have been impacted. And so that's why you see the proposal the way it is.
And as I recall, they, they're the exclusive pizza provider already? Is that correct? The difference though is that we're giving them naming rights on these two party rooms.
Right, so essentially, um, I apologize, but, uh, the two party rooms are already named, the Papa, the Papa John's Party Rooms through the current agreement and they're also the exclusive pizza provider within the facility. The amendment doesn't change that. The, the amendment is simply on the terms and investment, uh, section of the, the agreement is the only changes that are being amended.
Okay, now it's making more sense. I, I seem to have thought it was already the Papa John's Party Rooms, but?
Correct.
Okay, so it, it's again, changing the terms of the agreement in terms of fees and the timing of when they're paid. Okay.
Exactly.
When, when is that coming in front of us?
Uh, first reading would be December 8th.
Okay.
And likely a second reading on 15th.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That concludes the, our agenda items. We now have an opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to speak on any of the items that were on the agenda today, you can for up to five minutes and we'd love to hear from you. Anybody from the public? If you could just give us your name and, uh, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Ellie Smith and my comments are in relation to the Tuthill Park House. Um, I'd like to try to address some of the comments that I heard, uh, here today. There was an informational meeting that was held on October 28th and it was extremely well-attended. In fact, the Park Board, um, said it was one of the best turnouts and participation that they've ever had from a neighborhood meeting. Uh, so I, I, I mean, in response, Counselor, um, Kylie, to some of the meetings that were held in the house with others in the neighborhood, I don't know what the invitation, um, for those meetings looked like, but I suspect that it was primarily attended by those that have some opposition to the house, um, being demolished. I would also like to address Counselor, Counselor Sales' comment around the urgency of the removal of the house. The overwhelming majority of the attendees seemed to, at the neighborhood meeting on October 28th, seemed to welcome the removal of the Park House and the general feedback was that it has fallen into a state of such disrepair that is not the same standard that any private, private property owners are held to. And I encourage all of you, before you make any decision on this, to drive up there. Go walk around it. The estimates that they presented, again, I think they made clear that some of those figures were related to work that was needed prior to the tornado. This house was destroyed in the tornado. Humongous trees fell on it that went through it. Now, they said that it is structurally sound in the sense that I can walk past it and feel confident it's not going to fall on me. It looks terrible. It is an eyesore for all of the neighborhood. I would also like to address, uh, Counselor Brecky's comments on use. And I know there were more than one comment made about wanting to be able to see what would sit in its place. The fact of the matter is, we can't get to that plan. Anything for a hundred grand would be a hell of a lot better, excuse me, than what is there right now. There are those that live in closest proximity to this house, see it as an attraction for criminal activity and a threat to the neighborhood safety. I encourage you to speak with those living alongside of the park in closest proximity to the house. They will tell you what they see take place there and I encourage you to listen to the feedback from the October 28th meeting. The gardens and the space will still be available for rental, similar to McKennan Park and Sherman Park. Again, no historical significance to that house. There are a few neighborhood residents that I am aware of that are, are not close enough to either be bothered by the activity or know of it or see the state of disrepair every day. And they have a sentimental attachment to the house because they remember it as their neighborhood location for private events. I believe that the parks are for all of the residents of our community. And as Kelby indicated, the 800 square feet of the house provides such extreme limited utility, they don't serve the larger community very well. In terms of the cost, there are no costs up there for enforcement of the rules. There is no liquor to be had on that property. There is no, there are no numbers up there for securing that property or property, properly policing it. I have watched police sweeps. I've had people in my backyard on drugs wanting to get into the house, looking for a place to stay. And I think that putting any more money into the building in such a state of disrepair would be a poor use of taxpayer dollars and a complete disservice to the community that that park serves. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I, I don't need your address, but can I assume you back up to the?
I live in the very back of the park and I know that, um, other neighbors that border the, the Tuthill House that have seen and witnessed what's happened there feel it is a complete threat to the safety of our children. I mean, I, I, I don't mean to be dramatic and I don't mean to, you know, I have three young daughters. So to me, it's a perfect place for rape or other things to occur.
Great, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Others who would like to give input on any item that was on the agenda? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Andrea Keen and I am here representing my family and a lot of the other, uh, people along Edgewood Road and along the park, um, who perhaps received a notice from the city that there was going to be a meeting about Tuthill, but it said nothing about what the meeting was going to talk about. So they saw no reason to go to just a generic meeting about their neighbor. I mean, if it had said something, they would have been there to talk about this. Um, my family has lived there. My father bought a lot at Toddle Park because it, it, um, abutted the park. And he was a true believer that every neighborhood needs a park. And he and my mother both served on the Park Department over the years in, at different times and have felt that every park in the city should have its own unique, uh, advantage to the city, that it should add something that's different, not all be the same. The Tuthill Park House has been a landmark for, um, those of us that have lived there over 50 years. And that area has been developed over 50 years. We have watched weddings, we have watched graduations, we have watched schools have events at the park and in the house and use that house very well. I was aghast to learn that most of the deterioration of the house was before the tornado. I would have thought it was after and I'm really upset that the city has not put in the money, the Park Department has not put in the money to keep up that house. Because it is a landmark and it is something that we feel so strongly about having in our park to make it a unique environment for people to come and visit. Um, it, I'm sorry for some people who live directly on it, but three people, three families, concerns. concerns outweighing a whole city's use of a park somehow seems a little out of sync. Um, it doesn't seem like the scales of justice are going very well there for the citizens of Sioux Falls. I really ask that there is more information given to the citizens of Sioux Falls as well as the citizens of the people that live in that Tut Hill area community, so that they at least have a chance to know what is being discussed, which they did not know, and how it's being discussed and how it directly relates to them. And I know that there is crime at the top of Tut Hill Park. Um, I, as a middle schooler and a high schooler, had to ride in the car with my father, who would drive up to the top and take down license plate numbers. And we, my sister and I would lay in the backseat of the car because we had to go to school with these people, and it was embarrassing. But the neighborhood takes care of itself, and the neighborhood always has, and it's a beautiful spot. And it's a landmark that we so appreciate having to make that park unique in, in the way that it can serve the community. And so I just would really ask that the citizens be given the, the opportunity to have more knowledge about why the house is being torn down, why the house was not kept up over the years, and what the future of that property should be, should it be torn down before this drastic measure be taken. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Others? Would like to speak on any item? Welcome, thank you for coming.
Taking down my mask to speak?
It, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay. My name is Kath English. I'm a longtime resident of the Tut Hill Park neighborhood. We, uh, received a postcard on October twenty-third inviting neighbors to a meeting on the twenty-eighth at an indoor venue at the height of COVID, um, to discuss park improvements. Nothing about the Tut Hill Park House. This house was gifted to the city in nineteen fifty-three. If you look at the pictures in nineteen fifty-three, you will see that every house that's been built or bought since nineteen fifty-three was done so with full knowledge of the fact that Tut Hill Park House was there. An iconic structure, part of the history of Otanka Farmland, and that's what it was called, prior to being named Tut Hill Park when it was donated. That house serves as a nu- unique venue here in the city for peoples who, uh, don't belong to country clubs, who perhaps don't have a church affiliation, have a very limited budget for grandpa's eightieth birthday, wedding anniversaries, baptisms, high school graduations. It's unique to our city. It's a shame that it got into such disrepair, because according to the figures I received, currently, the income is about sixteen thousand dollars. It takes eight thousand to pay for the park employees to clean. So every year, there was eight thousand dollars to do something. I was told that money just went into the general fund. I questioned this a few years ago, wondering, you know, the barn has nice new siding, but they didn't side the house. But going forward, when you think of finances, there's ways to address this in terms of increasing the revenue. I mean, you could double that to two hundred dollars for four hours, and you have more than enough money to keep this facility up. When we went to the meeting, we were told, now mind you, five days' notice for the meeting. We get there and we're told, there were thirty people, as a matter of fact, from the me- at the meeting. Many of them that were concerned about the drainage or people in the park. And I can assure you, getting rid of that house is not going to get rid of kids on the park. That's another sideline. But anyhow, we were told the house was going to be demolished at the end of the year. So you've got sixty days, thirty days' notice for something that really affects the city. And what bothers me is this only went to the Tut Hill neighborhood. Mind you, this is not a neighborhood park, this is a city park, much like McKennan. I mean, if you were to go in there any day, there are people from across the city enjoying all that beautiful park has to offer. So to, um, try and keep this in the neighborhood, I think everybody in the city should have input, because people from across the city enjoy it and use that house. But anyhow, when we asked about what, am I out of time? When we were asked what the replacement was going to be, we were told there would be no permanent structure. Now, the beauty of this house is you can use it the year round. It's a enclosed structure. If they say a hundred and eighteen thousand approximately, there's thirty-five thousand dollars to tear it down and haul it off. That's a small price for the use, not to mention the history. And I understand there are costs involved, but there are ways to do this. There are foundations, there are community donors, you can get sponsors for that. So there's, there is a, a way to address any of the, um, things that are being thrown out there. The bottom line is, this is a park that defines the his- I mean, this is a house that defines the history of the park, and we're asking for a moratorium on any destruction on anything until we can get a group to move forward. What's with a one-year moratorium? What's suspicious to me is seven weeks before this meeting, they put a tin roof on and they put fascia, I think I'm saying it right, the, the wood in underneath fascia. So at one point, they were moving one direction, then all of a sudden they went that direction. That troubles me greatly. There was something not right about that. But anyhow, I'm asking for a one-year moratorium until we can explore options to repair this house and bring it up to speed. We can never replace this structure, and they could never do it for that amount of money. Thank you. And once again, I appreciate everything the Park Board or the Park Department does for us here in the city. It's what makes our city unique, but I think this also is what makes the park unique. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who'd like to give input? Seeing none? Thank you for the input. This meeting is adjourned.